Make for yourself, sir. That was good. I can't believe he said that. It's horrible.
We're having too much fun tonight.
You know we need Almond Joy. I love Almond Joy, damn. He's a reincarnated, uh... He's a reincarnated, uh...
Okay, good evening, everyone. We are on the record. This is a regular meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Wednesday, October 26th in the year 2016. We had a scheduled 6:00 PM start. We've had some technical difficulties and apologize for the late start of 6:36 PM. May we have a roll call for the commencement of this meeting? Counselperson Gajewski.
Yeah.
Hallinan.
Here.
Bajiano.
Yeah.
Yun.
Here.
Osborne.
Here.
Coleman. Rivera.
Here.
Waterman.
Here.
Lavaro.
Here.
We have all nine members in attendance. Would everyone kindly rise for a moment of silence in the memory of former councilman William Goyhan? Very much other intentions, council president?
Shirley Pinkney, mother of Steve Pinkney from HEDC, and the father of Priscilla Gardner, director of the Jersey City Public Library.
Gloria Mendoza.
Thank you very much for being standing for a salute to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intended by our like for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the municipal council, in accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, better known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall, the annual notice, which is the schedule of meetings and caucuses of the municipal council for the calendar year 2016. In addition, at the time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, the 20th day of October, to the mayor, council, business administrator, the local newspapers, and posted on the World Wide Web. With that said, could I have a motion?
Motion to add 10Z9 through 10Z11?
We're adding 10Z9 through 10Z11. The motion is made by councilperson Rivera.
Second.
Seconded by councilperson Osborne. On the motion, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. Lavaro.
Aye.
All right. With that said, council members, the... We had a miscommunication, the business administrator and I, and on your printed agenda, the word withdrawn appears next to an item that it should not. So, the only item, first reading ordinance withdrawn from tonight's meeting, is Item 3D, which was withdrawn at the caucus by the business administrator at the request of councilman Yun. So, all of the other first reading ordinances that I'll be reading into the record will be up for a vote.
Bob, I just want to... The one you said withdrawn on Newark Avenue, it's going to go through tonight, but maybe knock down on the second reading if we can't reach some sort of an agreement on this. And that's been arranged with Dave Donnelly.
Dave Donnelly. Yes? Okay, allow me, council members, and... All right. Permit me to read the first reading ordinances into the record. 3A, City Ordinance 16153. An ordinance approving a five-year tax exemption pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey statutes annotated 48:21-1 et sec and Section 304-12 of the Municipal Code for Property designated as Block 10901, Lot 106 on the city's tax map, and more commonly known by the street address of 461 through 469 Newark Avenue. 3B is City Ordinance 16166. It is an ordinance authorizing the transfer of city-owned property within the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment area to the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency. The properties are 693, 695, 697, 699, and 701 Newark Avenue, and 30 Cottage Street. 3C, City Ordinance 16167, is an ordinance amending Chapter 90, Animals, Article 3, Dogs of the Jersey City Code, to ban dogs in public parks. That's the actual title of the ordinance. This ordinance allows service dogs in all parks in Jersey City. 3D has been withdrawn. 3E is City Ordinance 16169, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City, adopting an amendment to the zoning map, expanding the restaurant overlay zone in Ward B. 3F, City Ordinance 16170, is an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the mixed-use zones of the Morris Canal Redevelopment Plan. 3G, City Ordinance 16171, is an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 1, General Provisions, and Article 3, Parking, Standing and Stopping of the Jersey City Municipal Code, prohibits the parking of any recreational vehicle upon any street or public right-of-way. 3H is City Ordinance 16172, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 3, Administration of Government, and Chapter 287, Solid Waste, to, 1, reassign the enforcement of certain solid waste and environmental ordinances from the Jersey City Incinerator Authority to the Department of Public Works, and, 2, delete references where appropriate to the Jersey City Incinerator Authority, Jersey City Sewerage Authority, and the Jersey City Parking Authority, which have been dissolved. So, council members, it's 3A through 3H. D withdrawn. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Hallinan.
Aye for introduction.
Bajiano.
Go on A, and as I said on B, that this issue has to be discussed over the next couple of weeks, and the people of the community have to be satisfied. I say yes on Reston then. Yes on B to G.
Councilperson Yun.
Well... And 3B, and I mentioned to the last council caucus meeting, you know, when they take away six lot from the Newark Avenue to bring out some redevelopment, I'm not feel comfortable to remove the municipal parking from the Newark Avenue. But, as David Donnelly mentioned today, they're going to create the parking space, then more than what we have. Today is maybe 48, but I'm going to add to one thing is that, not just create the parking space, but also, I'd like to see that their parking space, well, not affordable, affordable to the community. So, in other words, like a municipal parking lot, those kind of things I'm looking for. Based on that, I'd like to say aye for introduction.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye for introduction.
Coleman.
Aye for introduction.
Rivera.
Aye for introduction.
Waterman.
Aye for introduction.
Lavaro.
I'll just add on 3B. As was discussed at the caucus meeting, this is... I had discussions with the Redevelopment Agency and David Donnelly and the administration on this, and to address some of the concerns around parking for the merchants in the area. Many of them are not able to take advantage of the parking that's available there now. And so, the parking that will be... Ultimately, the goal here is to, yes, have some development, but to also make sure that there is affordable parking, retail parking for the retailers within the area, so that their businesses can continue to flourish and thrive over there. And knowing that we're going to work together with the Redevelopment Agency in ensuring that the property is ultimately put out to bid. It's not going to be just given away. Looking to put it out for bid for best use and for the best advantage of the city. And then ultimately, that will come back to the city council for its approval for the ultimate sale of the property. And as Councilman Bajiano pointed out, it's important to get the input of the community around there. Although I do know that at least the retailers there feel that there's a strong need to improve the parking situation and to see that parking lot be able to have more available parking for retail purposes. So, with that, I vote aye in all. Aye in all.
Council President, the good news is that I'll involve with Council Rich Bajiano.
That issue.
We're going to both these involve, okay?
Yes, absolutely.
That's what we say.
Okay, allow me to recap. 3A, introduced 8-1. Councilperson Bajiano, voting no. The balance, accepting D, which was withdrawn. Nine zero. Onto second reading ordinances. Item 4A, City Ordinance 157. An ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Parking, Stopping and Standing of the Jersey City Code, amending Section 332-24, Parking prohibited certain hours. Designating 46 feet in front of 509 Bramhall Avenue is no parking 7:30 AM to 8:30 AM and 3:30 PM and 5:30 PM school days. This is a public hearing on the subject ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by councilperson Waterman, seconded by councilperson Osborne. To close the public hearing, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajiano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the close of the public hearing. For final adoption of City Ordinance 16157, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the adoption of Item 4A, City Ordinance 16157. Okay, onto Item 4B. 4B is Ordinance 16158, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of city-owned property within the Ocean Bayview redevelopment area to the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency. The properties are 524, 528, and 530 Ocean Avenue, and 75 Bayview Avenue. This is a public hearing. On the ordinance, anyone wishing to be heard?
Yes.
Please step forward.
Laverne. I would like to know what they're going to do with that property.
I can answer that if I can. They're going to build 20 units of affordable housing with a certain percentage of them veterans' housing. And it's going to be... Want me to say the thing? 20 units of affordable housing. Low-income housing, I should say, not affordable. Low-income housing. It's going to be on three different income levels. It's going to be set aside in the building for veterans, and there's going to be services, social services, on the ground floor. A minority female developer, and I don't remember her name right now. Dave Donnelly is over there, he could tell you. But if you want Laverne, go in my office, and it's against my wall. Ask Donna to let you see it. It's a beautiful development, yes. Okay.
It's a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by councilperson Waterman, seconded by councilperson...
Rivera.
Osborne, to close the public hearing, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajiano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote. To close, for final adoption, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the close of the public hea... For the final adoption, pardon me, of City Ordinance 16158, Item 4B. Onto Item 4C, City Ordinance 16159. It is an ordinance of the City of Jersey City and the County of Hudson, New Jersey, providing for the acquisition of roll-off trucks and appropriating $499,632, therefore, from the city's capital surplus fund. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by councilperson Waterman, seconded by councilperson Osborne. To close the public hearing, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera. Waterman.
Aye.
President.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote to close the public hearing for final adoption of Item 4C, City Ordinance 16159. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the final adoption of Item 4C, City Ordinance 16159. Onto Item 4D. 4D is City Ordinance 16161. It is an ordinance amending Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic of the Jersey City Municipal Code, to rename Park Avenue Park View Avenue. This is a public hearing on the subject ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Yes, Yvonne Ballser. I feel as though...
Wait, wait, one second. We have a new court reporter.
Sorry. Yvonne. Yvonne Ballser. Y-V...
B-A-L-C-E-R. Yvonne. Y-V-O-N.
Got that, what's the last name?
B-A-L-C-E-R.
Okay. I don't feel this is a difference between the name. We had a tragedy going back in the beginning of this administration in which someone called in. The fire department went to the wrong place. There was a tragedy and someone died. I think in a tragedy, when someone is calling in and they're screaming and they're being somewhat hysterical, they may forget to say View and just say Park, and you will have the fire department go into the wrong place. This mayor made a commitment that he was going to fix this problem. And what he's doing, instead of fixing this problem of streets being similar-sounding names or names like Street and Avenue or Place, yes, that he was going to rename. This is... Oh, we... This is a tragedy happening. We know there is a Park Street up in Jersey City. I mean, I know people living up here, like Earl Morgan lives on Park Street. So then, now we have Park Avenue being renamed Park View Avenue. Does that make sense? It makes... But it doesn't make sense. It's too much of a similar-sounding name. And now, I have myself personally, when I lived downtown, I called in a fire and I saw a girl actually, you know, burn. Unfortunately, I saw that. And when you call in the fire department, you're somewhat hysterical, and you're not thinking clearly. And that was the building behind me that is now a garden. Unfortunately, someone lost their life in that, in those buildings. I just think that the mayor is not keeping his promise. This is telling me that the people who are running the city are the developers, because they want this name.
Yvonne, Yvonne, if I may just interject something here. This has been something that we've been concerned about because there's Park Street, there's Park Avenue and Park Road, and it's a huge public safety issue. Sorry, Park Place, not Park Road, Park Place. So, it's a huge public safety issue if somebody is calling the police or fire departments. And I think that's the reason why Joyce sponsored legislation a while back, saying that when developers used to be able to name the roads on their own. And she changed the legislation to say from now, from that point forward, developers couldn't name the streets anymore. The city council could name the streets. So, that fixed everything moving forward. This was a situation where it was named prior to that law going into effect. And so, while we agree that Park View isn't the best, it's better than at least having three that are Park, Park, Park. It's not ideal, but this was kind of... Legally, this is what we could do because that law wasn't in place at that time. But I totally concede your point.
I understand your point of view, but you know, I don't know how many times developers come back over and over again and get more and more things from the city. And there's a time when you can flex your muscles and say no, because I have seen that coming down the road. I still think this will lead to a tragedy. And, you know, and there could be an alternative. But thank you for explaining that.
This is a public hearing on the subject ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Yes.
Name is Michael Kulowski. Good evening. It's called Idiot Proof.
Give your name to the council.
K-U-L-O-W-S-K-I, Mike.
Now, say your name.
K-Kulowski.
You have a first name?
Mike.
Thank you.
It's called Idiot Proof. That means a mistake cannot be made. The tragedy that Ms. Ballser mentioned was confusion over on 911 phone, confusion over Grant with T and Grand Street with D. And the fire department trucks were sent to a wrong street, and somebody died. Now, what's the problem if... Why do you have to keep naming the same name Park all the time?
As I explained, the road is...
Either do right or don't do at all.
You're... We... Okay, finish talking. I'll speak when you're done.
Yes. It's called Idiot Proofing. That means no mistake can be made. It's as simple as that. Don't name another street Park.
Road is already named Park Avenue.
Change it to something different.
We...
It is.
That is exactly what we're doing.
Not with the name Park.
Because the name was already... Because the road was already named, we didn't have the same flexibility. This is something that, as a part of the agreement...
So, what's the problem changing to something different? Yes, that's... I'm sorry. Person, thank you.
Let's just let him finish. Just finish your remarks and then...
Yeah, what's the problem? Why you go to Webster Dictionary? There are plenty of words there.
Okay. You ready?
Yes.
Do it, you got them? So...
Yes.
We are amending the name.
Yes.
That's it. To something that was already in existence. Because moving forward, we won't do the same names, but this is prior to us. So, we are amending something that's already been done.
Right.
And there's nothing you can do, correct?
We're amending it.
Why don't you change it altogether? Why not?
Let's not, uh... Let's just... Let's just let it go.
All right, please conclude your remarks.
Finish your remarks. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Wait, wait, there may be someone else wishing to be heard. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
By councilperson Rivera, we give the second to the lady councilperson Osborne to close the public hearing. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun. To close.
Yes.
Close.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote to close for final adoption. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera. Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the final adoption of Item 4D, City Ordinance 16161. Onto Item 4E. 4E is City Ordinance 16162, an ordinance vacating a portion of Pine Street consisting of approximately 5,327 square feet or .122 acres, being located within the Morris Canal redevelopment area of the City of Jersey City, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
You're up, Laverne.
You're ahead, Laverne.
Excuse me, Councilman Coleman. Which end of Pine Street is this? The Ash Street end or...
You have to back up.
I'm going to call Dave Donnelly to explain. Which end of Pine Street is this? Pine Street. Pine Street.
Which end of...
Which end is this?
It's the end of Pine Street that...
By the railroad track? By the railroad track?
It's the end of Pine Street by the railroad track, which is a mess at the moment. So we're, it wanted to be vacated so the developer-
By the old boys' club.
Hmm, yeah, the old, old boys' club. Yeah, years and years ago. Yes.
What are your friends do down there?
No, we, on that, so I've been, I have been, uh, I have been remediating with the developer who bought that property. And so on Ash Street, I have a developer who's been remediating the property, um, Mar Development, um, and-
Excuse me, not you. When y'all be doing this, y'all need to come back in our community a little more often with this stuff.
Well, that-
Okay, let's move on.
About that was going on in my neighborhood. I've been there eighty years. This is an old item. I'm tired.
Okay, this, this has been going on a while.
It's an old item, Lavar. It's been going on for a while.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on this ordinance?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by councilperson Waterman, seconded by councilperson Osborne. Close the public hearing. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Allenan.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Waterman.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the close of the public hearing.
Take it outside.
For final adoption of City Ordinance 16162.
Yeah, before we take a final vote. Can I ask David Donnelly? David, yeah.
David Donnelly. Come to the podium, David, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I have just a few questions. Let me ask this. This land owned by JCRRA, correct?
The Pine Street? Pine Street is not owned by JCRRA. Pine Street is a city street in the right of way.
City street right of way, right?
Yes, this .122 acres.
Yeah, my next question is that, the city street is right now, right? Right of way, right?
Yes.
But you sold the land without city council approval?
Sorry, the, 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 the JCRRA has owned this property, I think, approximately since 2006. So this has been in our, our bailiwick, as it were, or our inventory, I'm sorry, our inventory of property since about 2006.
So, city street and the owned by JCRRA?
Mm-hmm.
Now-
Well, the city street is not owned by the JCRRA.
That is, that is correct. I have pictures of the city street, by the way. The reason why we wanted to vacate it to the developer so that it can be part of the development, so that it can be better taken care of. Um, I didn't bring enough copies, so-
But, 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 let me ask-
It's, it's, it's a mess.
I know.
You understand, yeah, we're mess.
That's, we thought it would be a good thing for the entire community, so this way the developer would take care of it. And it's, and it's a dead end and it's a stub, a budding railroad tracks. So to improve the community, we thought that this would be best and it, it moves forward. I have, we have the potential, yeah, we, that was actually a really good catch. Um, we have the potential, this project is going to get us to move forward. Once this project really gets going, a lot of the other projects in the area will get going. And this is important because there's a lot of vacant property down in the area. And this property, with, with all the environmental problems, has been at the forefront of one of the things that I've done to try to get development moving down in this area because it will improve the entire community down Lafayette.
So now, my next question is a 5,327 square feet. You sold, uh, that land to, uh, developer. What kind of price do you charge for that?
We charged, and we haven't received the money yet because it's still in the process of closing, um, because we're still doing the remediation, but-
And have to be remediated, environmental remediated, right?
Just indicated, so.
It's a done-
And so, so the, the sale price, um, I believe is about 1.2 million. Uh, there are some environmental contingencies, so that could go up or down a little bit, but no more than about 10%.
So mitigation is, uh, who pay for the mitigation cost?
Who, the developers paying for remediation costs. We're giving them a loan that they have to pay back. I have an environmental revolving loan fund that we've had the help of the EPA, but they have to pay all of that money back to the JCRRA.
But when I see the fact sheet, they're gonna pay $145,000, they have to hard disk discharge site remediation.
I'm sorry, what, what, what fact sheet are you looking at?
Fact sheet. You know, when I see that there was a fact sheet, fact sheet, the, the, now, item number six.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, okay.
So they cleared the site, who pay for the money?
I'm sorry?
Clean the site, continue the land, so they have to clean. So now, who pay the money? When I heard that they have a loan grant.
No, it's not a grant. It is a loan.
Loan.
Yes, they did, we, we, they did get a grant for 104, we got a grant for $145,000 to begin what we call assessment and investigation. So we spent $145,000 of that money, okay, through a grant. But the rest of it, okay, almost, let's just talk in round numbers, please don't, you know, I just want to talk, the rest of the, the, the lo, is a loan of almost $1 million.
Okay.
That the developer will be paying back.
Paying back.
I have an amortized, basically mortgage against the property, like anything else that they'll pay back.
Okay, whatever they spend the dollars to clean the site, we're not gonna give you credit for that, right?
I'm sorry.
Whatever they spend the dollars to clean the site, we're not gonna go give them credit for, in a total price, anything like that.
There is a small credit on the price, but eventually we'll, we'll be receiving 1.2 million.
Okay, at least we're gonna receive the 1.2 million dollars, right? All right. And by the way, when you get your land from the City of Jersey, how much JCRRA paid for City of Jersey City?
On this property? This was, eh, this was transferred to us with a bunch of properties. Um, I'm not exactly sure how specifically what was attributed to that. The, the number of around $500,000 is, is in my head of what that was worth, but this was before me, so I'm not exactly sure of the number.
Then BA, let me ask you a question. When they JCRRA sell this land, they get the 1.26 million dollars from the developer, their money come to City of Jersey what JCRRA kept the dollars?
In this case, in this case, it was not coming back to the, the city. I'll, I'll enter that for you. I mean, I, I wasn't, I wasn't planning giving you the 1.2.
David, look towards the reporter when you're speaking.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. That, this is, this is, this was property that was transferred to us a while ago that the JCRRA paid to the city a while ago.
So, but you don't know how much JCRRA paid to City of Jersey City?
I believe, and I have to go back, that the value that was attributed to this property back then, and, because the records are a little bit hazy, I'm, I'm sorry, it was before me, so the record keeping was a little bit hazy.
Well, I understand.
The value attributed to this property was $500,000.
But Bob, you have no idea?
I, I think the transaction occurred at least a decade ago, and from what my, my recollection is that the cash transaction already occurred. So whatever JCRRA gets now, it's to their benefit.
That's not their money.
Yeah, because the other thing too is I've had to do upkeep, you know, the agencies had to spend money to do upkeep on this property over this past 10, 15 years. And, you know, I, I, let's, let's be clear, I, I have a, I have an agency to run and we're not in line, we're not in line item in your budget.
Yeah, okay.
So I, to, to run this agency properly, you know, I need to do also sometimes what's best for the JCRRA so that-
Even has to hustle.
What?
Did you have to do a little hustling?
Yes. And this is, and to be quite honest with you, this, this is a property that I've been working on so that I can help the bottom line of the JCRRA.
Okay, can we do the final vote? Call?
Okay, thank you.
It has nothing to do with vacation. It's a separate issue.
Understood. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna call it from the top. Councilperson Gajewski. Allenan.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Step away.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have eight members voting in the affirmative for the adoption of City Ordinance Item 4E, I wish we hadn't split this ordinance up into three pieces, but here's the first part of the trifurcation. Item 4F, City Ordinance 16163, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City, adopting amendments to the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan to amend Zone 10. Mrs. Balcer?
Yes, Yvonne Balcer, and I also occurred with you, when I read this ordinance, I have questions, and I don't know if they belong to question F, G, or H. So I'm just gonna speak once and hopefully I don't get thrown down saying I'm on the wrong particular one. This is my problem with this. Now, here is the map. And according to the map we have here, you have language that says possible walkway on Tonley Avenue. You have, we're talking about a deal, a contract, and we have the word possible in there. How can you have possible when you're doing a contract? That's the problem I have with this is that when you do something like this and it's very, uh, the language is not very definite in a contract, that means A, it does not happen, or B, it is totally changed. But I find this particular one on the, the language here unacceptable.
Which, uh, which section?
Um, that one, it says map one, that's all I can know. I made a copy, I didn't bring the whole thing, thing with me. But it's right here on walkway, it's the walkway.
What's on the map?
If you look at it, it says possible, possible walkway, not a definite walkway. Okay? It's, it's this one over here.
Apps, yeah.
It's the map, okay? The other problem I have, and I don't know if this is G, it may be G, I'm not exactly sure, it says this ordinance amends, and it goes on, um, for an additional stories may be added to the site, maybe. How do we do an, an, an ordinance, which you have the word possible and maybe in there? This is a contract. I mean, it may be eight stories, it may be 12 stories, because you have a very loose language in this. I find that very unacceptable. And this one is, is the summary statement. And again, I don't know which one this is, I do apologize, I didn't write down what it was when I made a copy of it. So I, I just find that somewhat, uh, unacceptable for language, the city is a contract. If we're giving something away, I want it in black and white, I don't want it in words like maybe, up to. I want it definite. Or it should be in there, it should be revised by the city council, because that's not right. I remember when they tried to do Journal Square going back probably in the year 2004 under another developer, and we gave these 30-year tag, and it, nothing went through. So it should be done piece by piece as we get to it. That's the problem I have. The other thing I want to ask, and I just want to bring this in, which probably should be part of, I don't know, maybe H, I'm not sure, if you're gonna do an art zone, let me tell you what, why downtown failed, the museum. The museum failed, and I live blocks from that, it failed because there was no parking. You're not attracting New York City, you're attracting people from the suburbs. New York City is not, they take their path over to go to our museums. There's over 200 museum, I had a book around, I was a teacher in New York, there's over 200 museums in New York City in the five boroughs. So you're not gonna attract New York City residents, you will attract people from, um, suburbs. And unless there is definite parking for people attending these events, then it's gonna be a flop. And that's what happened downtown. It was a flop because people came in and they could not park. And that's the reality behind it, because they used a building that didn't have parking at all. I mean, we have all these bikes, but get over it. You're going out at night, people are not gonna be using bikes, city bikes, they're gonna be using your cars. So, um, I'm not very happy with the language. I wish that would be fixed. Uh, I'm not happy with the fact that, um, how many stories might be what stories? I mean, you, it, it could be any stories, we're doubtful about it. The language is very sloppy. But then again, this is a redevelopment agency, and I've, I'm never happy with things coming out of redevelopment agency. I will, I've said this numerous times, it should be, is, is all forthright concern. But that's my comment. I'm not gonna speak on all and come up here backwards and forwards, that's in a, I, I don't do that. But I'm just letting you know that the language should be fixed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public hearing on the ordinance, anyone else wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by councilperson Waterman.
Uh, I-
Council president, you.
Just before, uh-
Wait, 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 wait.
Close the public hearing.
To close the, let's close the public hearing. The council president actually had the second. Council president Lavaro, to close, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Allenan.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We've closed the public hearing.
Robert, uh, I just say, Yvonne, in the future though, anything that they do over there still has to go before the planning board, the zoning board, it still has to be approved by whatever council is here in a couple of years.
Good point.
But that's not the reason I wanted to say, today, which I find this crazy because it's October 26th, the Lowes Theater sent a three-page, uh, notice. And I think the developer, Mr. Harwood, you should look at this very carefully, and I think you should speak to the people at the Lowes Theater, because there's a lot of truth in what they're saying here.
But that's not about F, G, or H, is it?
Yes, yes, it is. It's about F, G, and H. And I wish I had received this, uh, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, when we had a meeting here at City Hall, or we, you know, when we had time to discuss some of these issues in this letter here. But as I said, I just got it this afternoon from, uh-
Sorry, you just got it.
So I'm asking you to please sit down with the people at the Lowes, discuss this letter, and iron some of these problems out.
Hey, Jeff?
Yeah.
Can I ask, Yvonne mentioned to that, you know, based on that possible, maybe, you know, are you feel comfortable to, as a planner, to put on writing like that, can't you? I'd like to hear your opinion. What do you think? He wrote it, right? No, he didn't write it.
Yes, he did.
Jeff, to the podium, please.
Any region you say possible, maybe?
It's a map.
It's on the map.
Yeah.
It's not in the ordinance itself, it's on the map.
So she's referring to on map one, there's a annotated area here, possible walkway to Tonley Avenue. That property is not part of Zone 10, and it's not owned by the Harwoods. We are hopeful that the walkway that goes through the area could potentially be extended out that way, but that would require future agreements with the Port Authority and Conrail. If we can have those agreements, and we can achieve all of that, it would be great to have that walkway go all the way through. But there's no mechanism today to assure that we could do that. So right now, we're just sort of setting out the vision for that, and hopefully we can get to those agreements in the future.
Okay.
Explain that.
I think the other language that she was referring to is actually in the other amendment.
Okay.
I just want to say one other thing. Mary Carter Bucci, I want to thank you again. When this was presented to us about a month ago, I objected to quite a few things that were in these plans. And you did a very good job in changing that, and I want to thank you. And the people of the neighborhood, thank you also.
It's Bucci Carter, by the way.
Ms. Ann Bucci Mary Carter?
Change your name.
So Jeff, I just want to, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I just want to make sure, so that the public can understand what you just said, is that the reason it's possible, because it doesn't belong to us or the developer, we put possible because hopefully we would like to do that, but this ordinance has nothing to do with whether that can happen or whether that can. Is that correct?
That's correct. The area is actually part of the air rights over the rail tracks, and hopefully we can come to an agreement with the Port Authority about that in the future.
Speaks to our aspirations and vision for the area, yes?
Okay.
Aspirational vision.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. For a final vote on city ordinance, 16163, item 4F, Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the adoption of city ordinance 16163, item 4F. Onto item 4G. City ordinance 16164. An ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan to add a public arts fund bonus. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Hallinan. To close the public hearing, Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Coleman. Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote, to close the public hearing.
Okay, Bob, before we go.
Wait, 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 wait.
All right, okay, all right, go ahead.
Wait. For final adoption of city ordinance, 16164, item 4G.
Okay, before we finalize the BA, we have a public art fund in the City of Jersey City?
Does we have a public arts fund in the City of Jersey City?
Public arts fund?
Not yet.
Not yet, right? Not at all, right? So now on, whatever we collect, they're from the disordinance, we're going to put your money in there, right?
We would have to ask for a dedication by rider for the state of New Jersey to any funds that are received, we put into that dedication.
Okay, I just want to make sure, we don't have that now, right? Or we will.
Okay, from the top, Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the adoption of city ordinance 16164, item 4G. Our last second reading ordinance is city ordinance 16165, item 4H, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan to adjust zone boundaries and corner lot bonuses. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by the Council President. To close, Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
That's to close for final adoption of item 4H, city ordinance 16165. Councilperson Gudjuski.
They're all about Journal Square.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Hallinan. Aye.
Bajiano.
Oh, it's about time, it's not downtown.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Oh, Rich, it looks like a good project for your neighborhood. I bet I.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
President.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the final adoption of our last second reading ordinance, city ordinance 16165, item 4H. Councilman Rivera, you were out of the room moments ago when we voted on item 4E, that was the vacation of a portion of Pine Street. Would you like to cast your vote? Your "I" vote makes the recorded final vote of city ordinance 16162, 9-0. That's item 4E. First speaker, Laverne Webb Washington.
You know, I've been coming down this city council meeting, it's 30 good years, 35, and I see the change of this city, the change of this council. And at this point, we're going into the 21st century. I ride up down the streets of Jersey City, I, excuse me, excuse me, I'm talking, and you over talking me. Thank you. And I ride up and down the streets of Jersey City, whether it be West Side, Central Avenue, Ocean Avenue, MLK, Grant, whatever. But when I see young men and women standing on street corners that need jobs, and all this development coming through this city, we need a better plan for our people of this city. And I'm saying that, today I was sitting in Crazy Greeks, I go every day, and me and Jason O'Donnell, who used to be the freehold in Bayonne, we were sitting there and I was showing him something. I say, you see this? I said, this is why I do what I do. It ain't about money, it ain't about being in the Jersey Journal or on the seven o'clock, five o'clock news, it's about caring about where we live at and the people of this city. Just like I was saying to him, I played down there on Pine, Whiting, Monitor, Maplewood, the Jersey City Boys Club down there, before they tore down Lafayette Gardens and put that up, and my oldest brother that passed, I listened to the story before they built the Lafayette Project, it was quicksand over there by Air Street. My brother, would be 80-some years old today, he says he was a Marine, and he told me the stories how he played down there. My brothers and sisters went to Old 22, that was on Johnston Avenue, then the other one was down on Holiday between Communipore and Bramhall. We've been in this city a long time, a long time. My mother raised 14 kids in here. My father worked for the county, then he worked for the Jersey City Print Company, then he had a car wash on Maplewood, Pacific, where we lived there, and the house where we lived at. And he taught his seven sons how to work. My brother worked 50 years up there in that county, in the vest, but he died there, that was his, that was, that was his baby. We care about the city in which we live in. And I don't come here in vain, I'm not coming here looking for nothing, you don't have nothing to offer me. But I care about like this picture I brought here tonight, with the late council member and teacher Willie Flood, and some of the kids in 22 school back in 205, when we had developers like George, that worked the medical center, and he helped me with bringing coats to this city, Timlin boots to our kids, this is not a bunch of African-American, this are little Spanish kids there, there's little white kids there. My children don't have no color what I do in this city. And they're not just from water, they go from up here from the Heights to Bayonne Line. When I come here to see about housing, when a young man came and told me he launched his apartment, he had to get out in 24 hours, they didn't even give his time. I got a lady that got a storefront calling me now, she needs help with her rent on Grand Street, where she taking shelter, people with drug problems. Y'all don't know my story. When I get them phone calls, I get a three o'clock in the morning phone call, but I come here to help you, to help my community. I don't come here badgering you, I come here to support you, so you can do better in my community out here. There's a community out here that needs this council, needs this mayor that's in charge right now. This ain't no joke for me. I'm a 68-year-old black woman that can be doing other things, that got six grandkids given out in Atlanta, Georgia. I don't have to run around with these babies right now, I got about 300 application, I'm going to give out coats next month down to my basement, I've been running around giving out school uniforms. I don't have to do this with two bad knees, and come down here and freeze for five or six hours. This is not a joke. This is serious what's going on out here, without children are killing each other. I got 12-year-old kids taken out of school to go to a funeral, that need to be in school, smoking weed. There's a cry out there, and you people that sit up here can help that cry. I don't come down here badgering, I come down here to support, so we can support this community we live, we need jobs, we need housing. When I ask questions, I want to know what's going on with my community. I got five people now I'm trying to put in the Arlington Gardens apartment. They only got two apartments over there. We have no communication enough in this city, for our families. Thank you. You guys look at the picture.
Thank you.
This is back in 2005, I started before then.
Yvonne.
Before I start, I want to also acknowledge the passing of Bill Gorhan, and I want to say that he did a good job putting in those 100 steps, because as a person growing up in Hoboken, my hometown, I used to use those steps all the time, and I had to stop using them. So I really did appreciate his work on that, and so that legacy, and having him named for that, I thought was appropriate, even though people from the Heights, you know, did not appreciate me saying that, but you know, Bill and I did not agree on a lot of things.
Those people are from Hackensack, formerly the Heights.
I just thought that, I appreciate him doing that, and you know, and as he left the council, he and I see each other bumping each other all the time, so anyway. We did not get along on the council, but we got along a lot off the council. I give him credit for that. Now, this is here, and I'm glad the person from the BA is here. I have a question, sir. I went on to the county's website, I got a copy of the proposed two cents tax, and I'm looking at it, and it says two cents per hundred, and I realize that revow is going to happen. So if the city council adopt two cents per hundred, and revow happen, if someone's assessed at half a million dollars or a million dollars, what is the tax? If it's two cents per hundred?
Well, I think, you know.
I want on record.
How does it do the math in my head?
It's 20 cents per thousand, so I'll give you a little bit of.
Alrighty.
I want you to say, not me.
You want to say 2,000?
Four million dollars for a house downtown.
So there is a little bit of a flaw in the way it's written, and I think that was acknowledged when the council, you know, voted to put this on the ballot. So I'm not sure if the, what's been changed, because right now, it's written based on the current valuation. So we're at 6 billion, the two cents would come out to 1.2 billion. Once you are correct, when the revow does occur, when all the properties go up, the numbers will be substantially greater on the open space tax. So it needs to be amended to reflect.
Okay, so what I'm trying to say at this very moment, and I'm not putting any words in your mouth, and I'm not attacking you, sir, but, and I said this before in a blog, is that the way it is written right now, if my home is assessed, I'm making up a number now, I'm assessed right now at $100,000, and let's say I'm going up to half a million dollars, the way it is written, I'll be paying $1,000 if I vote on this. And if I live downtown, and you know they're going to be a million bucks or more, it'll be $2,000. So this open space tax, and I said this, and I got creamed by, oh, my math is wrong, but I knew I was right, because I love math. When you love something, you know you're right. The bottom line is, it is, and I know, because I heard it also from other people too, such as councilmen from, you know, I am not necessarily against open space. The problem I have with open space is that when developers have land, you never ask them to put in a park. You let them to put in from wall to wall. So you know, this two cents per hundred, and I read in the paper, someone says, oh, you're only going to pay $80 more, I'm looking at these people, I'm saying, these, I'm not going to mention names, but these people pose that have PhDs behind their names, and they don't understand the math at all. But you know, this is not an attack on you, sir, or the administration, I just wanted to have that on record, even though I knew the math. I wanted, you know, part of the public record. I also want to say that if you're going to put something in the ordinance, please do not put something in an ordinance that is not true, only for show. I'm sitting here saying to myself, then why have this in here? Or you can write it on the bottom over here, that we do not own the land, something in there. But you know, people read this stuff, and they're saying, oh, we're going to have this. Well, we're for it, and I think it's wrong for the city to do that, I'll be very honest. It's very wrong, it's deceptive. Wrong. I mean, I have a real problem, that's with the redevelopment agency, and Bayonne got rid of their redevelopment agency, and I think it's time to get rid of ours. Everything that happens is your responsibility up to the role, so you should take the heat, and you have this phony organization doing all this work, and I don't approve of it at all, I really don't. But I just want you to know that, thank you for giving me that $200, $2,000, you know, number. I realize the council may change it, the council may change it, and I want to fact.
It's $20 per 100,000 assessed value.
So $1 million means that $200 a year, I just want to correct.
Yeah.
It's $20 per 100,000. So a half a million dollar home.
Wait a minute, go ahead.
So a half a million dollar home would be $100. It's $20 per 100,000. So whatever the assessed value, so it's $20 for every $100,000 assessed value, it's $20. Half a million would be $100, 5 times 20.
Yvonne, I, uh.
Secondly, I think it's important to point out that that is the, two things, one, that's a non-binding referendum, meant to give the council just a general understanding of what the community thinks, and two, it gives us guidance as to what the max is. When we actually vote on it, we've talked about, at least in the caucus and some side conversations, that we would want to be a lot more specific about how the money could be spent and everything else. So this is really, the way I would think of it, is like it's a really big survey to understand what does the public think about doing something like this, and setting the maximum amount, you know, saying, if this was the maximum amount we would ever tax, what would you think about it?
Yvonne, I just want to say something about what you said. When I met, and the other people in the community met with Mullers, they're giving us a park, a playground, and a walkway. When I met with KRE, they're giving us a mini park in Journal Square. We have been up in Ward C telling them, you want to develop, give us a park, give us something back. So I just want to let you know.
And you know what else?
Thank you, Mrs. Ball, sir.
I would like for the business administrator to say that one more time, so that we can counteract what Yvonne said to the public, is that it won't be $2,000, it will be 20 times whatever equals $100.
Right, I initially misspoke. It's $20 per 100,000 of assessed value. The way it comes out, so if you've got a half a million dollar home, you would pay $100 a year in this tax.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Assessed value.
Next speaker is Phil Carrington.
Council President Rolando Lavaro, members of the city council, those within the purview of my voice. I am, Phil Carrington. My topic of the day is trying to speak or hold the city council accountable for the actions or the lack thereof. I was here time and time again, asking if specific question or questions pertaining to the rental and the lease of the Bethune Center, primarily for the art gallery that the director have, Alvin Pitti. I have not received any documents to that, and so I believe, I can say with all honesty, there is none. So here is what you have. Also, I have a copy of the Martin Luther King Redevelopment Plan. Nothing in the redevelopment plan calls for an art gallery in the Bethune Center. Nothing in the zoning calls for an art gallery in the Bethune Center. You don't have a lease for these art galleries in the Bethune Center. You don't have a license for the art galleries in Bethune Center, and he's paying zero rent. But I was told, of course, that the purpose for the rental income is to pay down debt. But when the place was built, it was built with 200, 2.5 million dollars with federal grants, and $2 million somewhere along that line in the loan. So you have to pay down the debt. I can understand that. But then you're saying, Phil Carrington, you didn't pay any rent, and so we're going to remove you forcefully for not paying the rent, this sounds good. But Alvin Pitti doesn't have, is not paying any rent, and of course, there is no movement on that. Again, based upon the information that you have, or you didn't, that you didn't submit to me. Now, it seems rather strange or unusual. To me, it is. There in no community would you remove a daycare center, after-school program, and a summer camp forcefully, and replace it with an art gallery? You see, a daycare center, after-school program, and summer camp fits within the guidelines of Martin Luther King Redevelopment Plan, and it serves the community, it is a community service. An art gallery only serves the artists, one or two of them. And so if you're using federal funds, which I believe you are doing, somebody needs to go to jail. Now, when they came to remove us, it was done in the most despicable or most embarrassing way. Yes, you had John Hallinan, the attorney, was there, I've never seen this kind of display in my life. We had eight babies and four grandmothers. So you had John Hallinan give this card, here I am. You had Alvin Pitti was there, you had the sheriff was there, you had the news media was there, and then you had five police officers with guns to remove eight babies?[1788.48] You had a paddy wagon on, on the outside, and a car circling the block. This kind of display was designed to insult us, but somebody's going to pay for this. What do you expect, I was going to throw a brick at the police? No, I'm sixty-three, no, I told my big, I start to write. See, I'm, I'm, I'm not playing that game anymore, somebody's going to pay for this. For example, if Yun was the director, or was the councilman, and he had a, a Korean director, remove a black person, and then the director had three rooms, ain't paying no rent, the black community going up, in uproar, but this happened to black people, or to me, and that didn't happen. Of course, if it was a Filipino, it would be same thing. Let me give another example. Last year, or year before, I walked in here, and the whole community was uproar because something with Danny and Ryan Strotters, which I don't think Ryan was any good anywhere, and men that were uproar because something with Danny messing with Ryan Strotters' job. Well, Danny should come down here and do that, so we can kill Danny, I would jump all over Danny if he move my stuff, but of course, anybody's saying nothing now. So this kind of imbalance or inconsistency is bothering me somewhere along the line. How, how, how does it work? Let me speak on this Ryan Strotters fellow. For example, the city, the mayor's going to come through in two thousand and thirteen, and Ryan said that my play yard, which had a pothole in it, it was really, really down, and he said, "Well, don't bring the, the person there." Diane came by and she said, "Phil, look, here's some money, fix the, fix the yard, I've been about to see men to fix it." That's a different kind of thing, so Brian leave a bad taste in my mouth. I don't know exactly what went down, but I was not really on the side of Danny, I mean the side of Ryan, because, but what I'm saying is, if somebody else do this to a black person, it would be uproar. I, I think that the business administrator, Alvin Pettit, and John Hallinan, when the federal investigate, the money that you all are using, the federal funds, CDPG money to fund that art gallery, y'all going to go to jail, somebody going to go to jail, trust me.
I would just like to say one thing, Phil, I'm not going to say much, but you need to...
Say goodnight.
No, I wanted him to, one thing he needs to clarify, when he talks about Alvin Pettit leasing or not leasing, Alvin Pettit is the director of the Bethune Center. He has office space and other space in that, that he does not need a lease for, he is the director of the Bethune Center, and his working space is housed at the Bethune Center. So you need to, you, you mixing apples with oranges, they're not the same thing. Alvin Pettit is not a client.
City employee.
He's a city employee, and his office space and working space is at the Bethune Center, and that's all, I just wanted to clarify that for you for later reference, I'm not going to address any of the other issues.
Art gallery, plain and simple.
Thank you, goodnight. Our keynote speaker is Mike Kulowski.
Quick statement, Mr. Byrne, just for a second, I wasn't on the list.
Wait, wait.
Mr...
John, I'm sorry, you have to be on the speaker's list.
Yeah, you have to be on the speaker's list, we'd have to hear from Mr. Kulowski, then the council president.
It's just about the veterans parade, letting the people know that it's going to happen on the twelfth, please support it.
Okay.
Get your constituents out there, it's going to be a wonderful thing, it's the second annual, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, John.
Last speaker, Mike Kulowski.
Mr. Kulowski, I know.
Fullop promotes Uber.
Start the clock, thank you.
Service, and Uber allows drivers to use personal cars, and city ordinance and state law requires having a commercial insurance for four higher vehicles. So basically, what Mr. Fullop does is he's promoting illegal activity, Uber having drivers with no insurance. You either have commercial insurance or you don't, and I see them all over town, and I received the Oprah documents from, from the clerk, which confirmed that. City does nothing with regard to enforcing existing state laws and city ordinance regarding Uber insurance, commercial insurance for Uber drivers. That's another thing I have to say for Open Space Fund, you have already, ladies and gentlemen, money, you don't even know it, you sitting on pile of money, it's called Parks Department, these imbeciles, I call, it's preposterous to call them Forestry Department, this is the imbeciles department, they driving around doing nothing and pretending, pretending they work. I caught them one time, I caught them many times, I have documented one time particularly, two crews, two hours job, from garage to job site and back, two hours, they did whole day, two crews, that's where your money is, you don't need to collect extra money from taxpayers, you have already there, it's the fraudsters or the Parks Department ripping you off on payroll. They're getting paid for doing nothing. Now, there was a death of a child on Kennedy Boulevard the other day, and how many people have to die for you people to do something regarding enforcement of existing laws of twenty-five speed limit on Kennedy Boulevard? I drove today to Union City to pick up somebody, and once you pass Secaucus Road, it's whole different gain, the laws are enforced, streets are cleaner, it's total different gain. You come back to Kennedy Boulevard, past the Secaucus Road back, it's a zoo, there's no enforcement of any kind, and now you have this police chief who's currently investigated by federal authorities, he was involved in, in many illegal activities, why don't you fire him and get somebody competent to run the city police department and enforce twenty-five speed limit on Kennedy Boulevard? Another thing I have, Mr. Lavaro, you promoted this business on Kennedy Boulevard.
Like I'm...
Three, two, and four Kennedy, and they illegally removing asbestos, and they dump asbestos in the Public School Number Seven. Now, what do you have to do, what do you have to say about it?
What is he talking about?
Asbestos, they...
Asbestos in the school system, finish, finish.
Okay, there, there's a, you have, you, you gave a tax abatement to one Onka Singh, S-I-N-G-H, two, two business, his residence is two, two, two Duncan Avenue, where I did your homework, that's the P.O. box of the rundown cash checking place. What kind of business is that? An LLC? Are they liable for dumping asbestos in public school, Mr. Lavaro? Can you explain to me how come? And it's nine, seven, two, Saint Thing, nine, seven, two Summit Avenue, illegal asbestos removal.
You can finish your comments.
Yes, I would like to, I would like to have somebody explain to me, how is it, but this, don't ask, don't tell, Fullop asbestos removal policy, I call it, don't ask, don't tell, everybody knows there is asbestos on many old buildings, but Mr. Fullop plays stupid through advanced activities of developers, especially from out of town, so I'm, I'm, I'm really, you know, this is not end of the story, I'm getting any alphabet soup of the federal government, any alphabet soup agency of federal government on this case, you're not going to dump on us asbestos, and they were doing today, this afternoon, and I documented that. If you need proof, Mr. Lavaro, be my guest, just ask me. Thank you.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you.
You're done?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Council members, that exhausts the speaker's list and the clerk. We're to petitions and communications, item six A through six Z four. We have officers communication, seven A, reports of directors, eight A. Where to the claims and addendum number one, councilperson Gudzuski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro. President.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the approval of the claims and addendum number one, resolutions a page at a time. Councilperson Gudzuski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
A through J, nine, zero, K through S, councilperson Gudzuski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the approval of ten K through ten S, ten T through Z three, councilperson Gudzuski.
Aye.
Hallinan.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the approval of the balance of business, Z four through Z eleven, would someone sing the sweet song at seven fifty-six?
By Coleman?
Who got the second? I, it was a lady, it was a lady, councilperson Waterman's going to get it. Who adjourned at seven fifty-six, by acclamation, say goodnight, everyone.
Goodnight, everyone.
And there's no respect, I tell you.